For coming to our board meeting at this wonderful school. We want to first thank Principal Lamaka for giving us a tour. And also for the Parent Teacher Association for providing some really nice desserts. Thank you very much. And now we have a special treat. We have Toby Gramberg. He's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Please start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you Toby, you did a wonderful job. So we have a few items of housekeeping. Do we have members of the media here? We would like you to introduce yourself. Do we have anyone online? Okay, thank you. Also, please mute your phones, your cell phones. And if you are wanting to speak during public participation, there is a table in the back that you can fill out your information and the topic that you would like to discuss. So please do that. Board members, speakers, please remember to turn your mics on when you begin speaking and turn it off when you're finished. And also, after we do the awards presentation, we invite all of the award winners with their awards to come forward. And we'll have a photograph with all of the board members and the winners. And then we'll have a short break after that. So now we have Principal Darren Lamaka to share his insights with the school and outfits in with our strategic plan.
Good evening again, and I'd like to thank all of you for coming out this evening and giving us an opportunity to share a little bit about our school. And we appreciate that opportunity. So if we take a look at the next slide with the strategic plan in there, I'd like to focus our attention kind of towards that central component where all students will receive the care, support, and instruction needed to graduate from high school with plans for their most successful futures. What we realize here at Melrose is that that middle part starts with us right here. Each fall, each September, when we welcome a brand-new group of five-year-olds into our kindergarten classes. All of that work starts right here with us. And we contribute to getting that to become a reality later on in high school. Next slide, please. I want to share before I go through our vision here that I need you to hear me say that our staff here at Melrose is as dedicated as they come. We work incredibly hard to take all of our students right where we get them. And we work to move them forward and grow each student in their unique ways that are necessary. So our school vision here at Melrose is that we nurture our school family with a sense of community and connection. We strive to consciously cultivate strong academic success while promoting an inclusive environment for all. And part of that, us being able to accomplish our vision here, is the overall educational experience that we provide here at Melrose. We work tirelessly to ensure that all of our students feel a sense of belonging here. And it's really important that each of them feel like a Melrose Bulldog. And we work hard to make that happen. We have lots and lots of rich traditions that have gone over decades. And we continue to believe in those traditions in helping create that vision that we have here and that sense of belonging for all kids. We have a carnival each fall. We have the holiday dinner that happens right before our Christmas break each year. In fact, this year, we had the pleasure of having Doctor, or excuse me, Director Cubic and Superintendent Corden join us for that, which was great. And we also welcomed about 400 adults on top of our 300 and some students that day in this space right here, and it's a super time. We also have a father-daughter dance, which the counterpart to that is a mother-son night. And after spring break, we were talking about in our tour a little while ago, Melrose starts marble season after spring break. And so it's something our kids look forward to. But all of those pieces go together to create this educational experience across the board here. It's really important to us. Next slide, please. If we take a look at our data for this last school year, this is the Oregon State Assessment Data. So it is what our accountability to the state of Oregon. And as you can see, for the area of English Language Arts, we had about 60% of our students at benchmark. And that did represent a slight backslide from the 22-23 school year. It was still above the state average. But I want you to know too, our staff isn't happy with that number. Because what we know is that with that 60% of kids that met the standard there, the counterpart to that is that about 40% of our kids did not meet what the state of Oregon says they should be able to do at this point. So we are working hard to find ways to counteract that and improve that because we do believe that all kids can learn. And we aren't okay that 40% are still not at benchmark. So for math, we ended the year last year at 54% benchmark. And that was also a slight drop from the prior year. And we are working hard again on that to find those alterable variables, those things that we can change in our instruction to impact that and grow those numbers. The path to graduation, we talk specifically about the, our regular attenders at Melrose, and that is kids that attend 90% of the time or more. We ended last year with 74% of our students being regular attenders. And we were pretty proud of that because that was a 7% increase from the 22-23 school year. Next slide. So our goals, we set for Language Arts this year was to move from 60% to 65%. And just to give you some perspective, we also have some interim data. And it's in the form of this iReady data. And we take that at the beginning of the year, and then in the middle of the year, and then again at the end of the year. And that has us currently, as of about three weeks ago, at about 57% of our students at benchmark. So those numbers are running pretty close to where we're trying to get with that 65%. We felt pretty good about that. In math, our goal was to move from 54% up to 59% meeting or exceeding. Our current mid-year benchmark in iReady came in with only 43%. So we still have work to do in that area of math. We're a little further off from where we need to get. But we do know that if we can push students to get what's called stretch growth, we have an opportunity to be able to make up that, and that's what we're shooting for. As far as our regular attenders, our goal this year is to increase that from 74% up to 79%. And to give you some perspective there, we're currently running, as of March 8th, when I ran this, 75%. So we're right in the ballpark there on that piece. Next up. So as far as the plan to meet these, we have a lot of things that we're working on, but I just wanted to highlight a couple. For the area of literacy, one of the big things that we've been working on this year is the idea of formative assessment, where we are working with our teachers to adjust their instruction, to modify future lessons based on what they're seeing in the classroom. And then also this idea of giving very specific targeted feedback to students based on what they're seeing in the classroom at that moment. We also are working on engagement strategies. And what we want is, we want all students to come in and be engaged in their learning because we know that's what's going to make the difference with them being able to learn and grow. And I got to tell you that not all students come in every day sitting down, looking at the teacher with a pencil in hand, waiting for the learning to happen. So our teachers have to have strategies in order to work to get that. Our goal is 100% engagement, 100% of the time. Is that tough? It is. It's a tough thing to get, but that's what our goal is, that's what we're striving for. So that's in the area of literacy. If we could move on to math. For math, we also, you'll notice on there that the formative assessments and then also engagement strategies are absolutely a part of math. But I wanted to highlight a couple of others also. We are also focusing in on utilizing teaching routines and habit activators to press students to be able to justify why something is the way it is in math. And then to also make generalizations. Because what we know is that if students are able to justify something to a partner or to the class or make a generalization, we know that their level of understanding at that moment is at a higher level. And so that's what our teachers are working to push for on a regular basis. And we also are working to leverage ideas from all students. And we're trying to get a situation where we have students that all have a mathematical identity that says, "I can do math." Next slide. For path to graduation, we are celebrating, the way this has currently been structured, is we celebrate perfect attendance. And I got to tell you, the last couple of months, it's been tough. We've had days in the office where, in fact, I was just sharing with one of the board members a little while ago when we were in doing the tour, that we had, we ended up pulling out an air purifier and firing that up because we had some pretty significant coughs, some fevers. We had kids that their stomachs were not feeling well, all in our little space there. And so we've been fighting that as we're working to encourage attendance. We also have to balance that with some pretty significant sickness stuff that goes around this time of the year. So we work on incentivizing that and having parties for perfect attendance and recognizing students at our star student assemblies who were able to get perfect attendance and several other things as well. So next slide, I just wanted to, once again, say thank you and also to say that this is an amazing place for kids to learn and grow every day. Our teachers are completely committed, and our support staff, to the work. And it's evidenced every single day, you'll see it. And the educational experience because of that is top-notch. And I'm thrilled to be a part of that. So that's kind of what I wanted to share. I'd entertain any questions that you may have at this point.
Any questions? Thank you so very much.
Absolutely.
And now we have our Roseburg High School Student Leadership Report. We have Ryan Wilson and Spencer Bingham. Take it away, guys.
So I just wanted to kind of take a second to apologize. When I was putting in all the dates for these meetings, I wrote down Sunnyside. And so I was sitting outside Sunnyside knocking on the door, wondering what you are supposed to get into. So I just wanted to apologize. We're excited to be here tonight to share some of the highlights from the past few weeks at RHS. Starting with leadership, we just barely got done with the Arts Assembly. Last time, we kind of talked about that, almost, you know, the Roseburg's Got Talent idea, just arts recognition and talent. This showcased over 20 events, including a staff act, winter guard, an opera singer, swing dancing, and even an accordion performance. It was incredible to see so many different students share their talents.
Yeah, one of the best parts of the assembly was welcoming our eighth-grade middle school leadership students to experience it firsthand. It really gave them a preview of some of the highlights of the high school culture. And especially just, you know, allowing them to see what some of the hands-on leadership opportunities there are next year. So we were just excited to, you know, I think that was a first-time thing we've had. So very excited to welcome them in as well. In addition, we're also thrilled to announce this year's prom theme, which will have a tangled-inspired name. I believe we picked "Under the Lanterns" because we can't really take tangled because, you know, copyright, all that lame stuff. So thanks, Disney. Our leadership team is hard at work planning decorations, organizing ticket sales, securing chaperones, and also we even collaborate with our own, I believe it's the jazz band to play during part of the event. So it's coming up in late April.
In addition to prom planning, we recently wrapped up Kindness Week, an initiative focused on spreading positivity throughout our school. And looking ahead, we're prepping for a couple of guest speakers that we're going to bring on the campus kind of just to talk about leadership and motivation, just, you know, kind of bring in some different viewpoints. Additionally, leadership is, we're currently working on club grants, allowing a bunch of the student organizations to apply for funding for their projects. And then another important reminder is that leadership applications for students is going to open up pretty soon. So we're excited to see, you know, who all wants to be a part of leadership next year.
Right. Winter sports also wrapped up at the end of February, and our teams had some pretty good accomplishments this season. First of all, huge Shadow Tour wrestling team who placed third in state, you know, funnily enough that we've seen a lot better in past years. But, you know, no surprise that we had 14 state qualifiers, won the district meet, and our head coach Steve Lander was named District Coach of the Year. So, you know, honestly, I'm talking with people, it was like the fact that we got third rather than being champs. It was like, it just shows how good the wrestling program is, I mean, top-notch athletes. So even though OSAA competition is finished, we all know wrestling season never truly ends with those athletes.
Our Unified Basketball Team also had an amazing season. I think one thing that was really unique is at the Arts Assembly, we were able to recognize them. And just, I think that, you know, the students that were in Unified, they just had a really, you know, it was such a cool thing just to see their faces and how they took this recognition that I guess, you know, they're not super used to. So I thought that was something that was super cool. For the Swimming Team, RHS sent nine athletes to the state tournament where they achieved some of their highest placement in recent years. Many of them continued their season at YMCA Regionals in Boise, Idaho on March 8th.
And of course, we have to recognize our cheer team, who once again dominated at state. They brought home second place in the OSAA State Championships and in the 6A Small Traditional category, which is a pretty incredible achievement. Looking ahead, spring sports have officially begun. Track, baseball, softball, golf, and lacrosse teams, boys and girls, have started their seasons with tryouts and first practices on March 3rd. Many teams are now, you know, fully easing their competition schedules, and it's going to be an exciting spring.
Our drama program put on another incredible production this year. Their spring musical Mama Mia. Over the last two weekends, they performed six shows, and all the audiences were packed. So that was another super cool thing. And then tonight, as we speak, the RHS Foundation is hosting their scholarship night where there's five students, you know, all excited to see who won. So that's something else that's pretty cool.
Right. And our FFA, Future Farmers of America Program, also held its annual auction, raffle, and dinner last Thursday. Always a pretty big event, raising funds for upcoming projects. In the arts, students in photography, fine arts, and ceramics will have their work displayed at the Umquod Valley Art Center in an exhibition called Compositions. The opening night is March 21st, and we encourage everyone to check it out. Meanwhile, our Spring Choir Concert will take place on Tuesday, March 18th at 7:00 PM in the Rose Theater. Doors open at 6:30 PM, and the event is free to the public. All of our choirs will be performing, and there will even be solo and duet performances, which actually is new this year, and it's pretty cool.
In the classroom, students from Tasha Stevens Garcia's Legal Terminology Class recently were able to participate in a mock trial at Douglas County Court under Judge George Ambrosi. I might be messing that one up, but they focused on tort law, working through a case to prove elements of negligence, including duty breach. And they were able to use six witness affidavits and six pieces of evidence. So that was super cool. And then our robotics team is preparing to compete in the state competition this weekend, so we're wishing them luck.
We also have some big news from a Wind Ensemble, also known as our varsity band. They knocked it out of the park at their first OSAA Festival of the season on Monday. At every festival, three OSAA music judges gave scores, or excuse me, give scores that can qualify a band for the state championship. And this month, all three judges gave the Wind Ensemble qualifying scores, making them strong contenders for state later this season.
Finally, we recently welcomed eighth-grade students on campus to be able to have a high school preview day. They were able to tour the classrooms, meet teachers, and kind of got a taste of what high school is going to be like. And so we're looking forward to being able to see all of them next year.
Right. And this past month has been packed with exciting events, student achievements, and school spirit. Whether it's through sports, music, theater, leadership, or academics, it's amazing to see RHS students pushing themselves and excelling in so many different areas.
And we're incredibly thankful to be able to be here tonight and kind of share everything that RHS has been up to. I think that, you know, there's a lot that might go unnoticed, and a lot of students that do some pretty incredible stuff on campus. So we're glad to be able to try to share a little bit of what they do. So if you guys have any questions or anything, we'd love to answer.
Well, I have a couple of things to say. I'm going to move this for a moment so I can look you straight in the eyes.
Yeah.
Aren't these guys amazing? I mean, these students are amazing.
Thank you.
You know, they're top-notch students, but they're involved with all these other things. Now, you think about this leadership program and what they're doing, they're applying for scholarships, they're doing, you know, for their different clubs. They're doing a lot of different things that maybe you wouldn't just get regular school time. But, I mean, this is, it's really impressive. I mean, down to having their band, which Mama Mia was really good, and the band was really awesome. So having them play at prom, good choice. I mean, that was great. But what I was thinking though is, you have your students here, these are our kids. They're going to be here. All they need is encouragement, and that you can do it, I believe in you. And planting seeds even now that will give them hope and to think of, you know, pointing them out and saying, "Someday, that can be you sitting there giving the report." That you can be leading, be a school leader. So I just, kudos, guys, you're a great example, and we're just really proud of you. But we're proud, we're proud of the whole leadership team and all of the students at RHS.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for being late.
That's okay, that's okay. And now, we're going to celebrate more success, right? We have our students are going to be receiving awards, and then we have some teachers receiving awards.
Start off with the students here. Our first exceptional student we'd like to recognize is your very own Melrose Elementary Bulldog, fifth grader Kason Clausen. Get all the teachers, anybody, staff, parents, family, come on up. All right. Yeah, we got more. Kason is a remarkable fifth grader at Melrose. He is an outstanding leader and positive role model at the school. Kason exemplifies what it means to inspire others through his actions. Whether he's helping a classmate with a tough math problem, leading a group project with enthusiasm, or simply offering a kind word, Kason shows us the power of positivity and teamwork. His teachers describe him as someone who steps up when others need guidance, always with a smile and a can-do attitude. Kason doesn't just follow the rules, he sets an example for his peers, showing them how to be respectful, responsible, and caring. His leadership shines in the classroom, on the playground, and in every corner of the school. Kason's dedication and spirit makes the Melrose community stronger, and he is so deserving of being recognized as the School Board Student of the Month. Congratulations, Kason. And our next exceptional student we'd like to recognize, from Joseph Lane Middle School, sixth grader Connor Beam. Have any family and staff come on up from Joe Lane? It is with great enthusiasm that Joseph Lane nominates Connor for recognition at this school board meeting. Connor exemplifies the qualities of kindness, responsibility, and leadership, consistently demonstrating integrity and a willingness to go above and beyond to support his peers and school community. Whether it's helping his classmates, responding to teachers with respect, or dependently setting a positive example, his actions reflect the values the school hopes to instill in all of its students. Connor's kindness and strong sense of responsibility make him a standout choice for this recognition. The school is proud to nominate Connor and believes he represents the very best of the Joe Lane community. Congratulations, Connor. Next up, from Roseburg High School, we have Tyson Jewett, ninth grade. Tyson's work ethic is truly unmatched. Whether in the classroom or on the marching field, he consistently gives his best with a smile. His commitment to excellence shines through as he develops into a standout musician, effortlessly balancing hard work with a great sense of humor that keeps rehearsals both engaging and productive. A forward thinker and a goal setter, Tyson takes initiative, even completing schoolwork while on vacation. That's crazy. But great, great crazy. His curiosity and kindness make him a pleasure to teach, and his positive energy inspires those around him. Always eager to share his knowledge, Tyson helps others, helps others grow along their learning journeys. Congratulations, Tyson. Roseburg High, stay up here, we dropped. You guys got the memo. Last but not least, also from Roseburg High School, twelfth grader Tyler Ots. Tyler's not here, do we want to read his message or save it for another time? We'll save Tyler for another time then, all right. And can we get all of the award winners back up here with the school board for a group photo? Oh, look, we still got to do teachers, sorry.
So we have one to give away that we were going to before, but she wasn't able to attend. So we have Sarah Richardson from Fullerton 4 Elementary Nutrition Service Assesment. I love that little twirl. I don't know, I think we should all do the twirl. Sarah creates a warm and welcoming environment for the students at Fullerton 4 Elementary. Each day, she greets students by name, often being the first smile of their day as she serves their meals. Committed to preparing nutritious and delicious food, Sarah is Committed to preparing nutritious and delicious food, Sarah is a team player who always goes the extra mile. She is eager to learn new tasks and willingly steps up to the kitchen lead position whenever needed. Dependable, dedicated, and enjoyable to work with, Sarah truly enhances the school's atmosphere. Serving reimbursable meals, following recipes, and ordering products are just some of the tasks that Sarah excels in. Her attention to detail and positive attitude make her an amazing and invaluable Nutrition Services team member. And her crystal apple says, Sarah's dedication, teamwork, and positivity make her invaluable to Nutrition Services. Thank you. Congratulations. Next, we, from Melrose Elementary, before I make this announcement, I want to make sure, Matt, that, that everybody can be seen on the camera, because we have family members who are watching from out of the area. So, we have, we are honoring Shannon Ruiz, the fourth grade teacher here at Melrose. Okay, Matt, is everybody in the picture? Okay, thank you. Melrose is proud to recognize the leader of the school's fourth grade team, Shannon Ruiz. Ruiz, Ruiz. Okay, thank you. Shannon has this calming presence and an unmistakable warmth about her, something easily understood by all. Her dedication to providing high-quality instruction can be seen daily as she's constantly looking for new ways to improve teaching and learning while advocating for all students to be included. Shannon represents a steadfast presence where others know that an understanding era awaits should they need anything. Even with a busy family life of her own, she takes on leadership roles within the school, believing everyone can always improve. She is an active member of the 5D team where she learns, plans, and delivers meaningful professional development to help the entire instructional staff. She also runs a Lego Robotics Club for students and has been an active member of the Science Adoption Committee. Melrose is better because of Shannon. Congratulations. Her crystal apple. Her crystal apple says, dedicated to learning, unmistakable warmth, steadfast presence. Congratulations. Actually, Melrose people, you may want to stay up here. We have one more. Now we're celebrating Sunny Stevenson, kindergarten instructional assistant. Perhaps it was destiny, but Sunny Stevenson has found herself brightening the days of five-year-olds in Mrs. Steinbacher's kindergarten class. Sunny is consistently smiling and happy, enthusiastically helping each student with everything from learning the new letter and sound in reading group to guiding them to manage their emotions when their friend hasn't yet learned to share. Her kindness allows her to quickly build positive trusting relationships with each in her care. Sunny is also someone who anticipates what needs to be done and just does it. She is the person who fills in the gaps in things that others may not know or even there. She does it without any expectation of acknowledgement or praise. She is absolutely a major contributor to the overall growth and success of the students in Room 21. Sunny is a shining light at Melrose, and her crystal apple says, shining, smiling and happy, enthusiastically helpful, shining light at Melrose. Congratulations, Sunny. If we could please have all of the award winners come forward with your awards, and we'll have a picture with the board. We will now take a brief recess, about five minutes or so, and then we will begin the business portion of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for staying. And we, do we have anybody online that, for public participation? Okay. We do not have anyone who is here physically for that, so we will continue with our regular board meeting. We have Superintendent Corden, he is going to do the review of agenda and communications to the board.
Thank you, good to see everybody tonight. Also want to welcome Director Hammerson. Eve, how are you? Thanks for joining us tonight. Good to see you. And thank you again, I know it's been mentioned, but thank you to the staff here for the warm welcome, for all the setup and the flowers and the parents, and it's been wonderful, so thank you. In terms of the review of the agenda, I do have a couple items for the board's consideration and just a knowledge tonight. So, the first is, we, in the consent agenda, we do have one new recommendation for hire. That's Jennifer Fisher, a science teacher at Joe Lane. The minutes also in the consent agenda for February 26th have been added. We do have an additional updated slide deck for Phoenix Charter, thank you Cory for sending that update, you'll notice that in there as well. We've added Resolution 242512 in there in support of rural school funding. We did have an item number three tonight, which was to approve Nutrition Services Management Company, and that's been postponed until our next business meeting on April 9th to allow the, a time for the completion to review all the bids. And we've also added our committee reports, and you'll hear those tonight. Now, those are building the sites in both curriculum and instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving to the consent agenda, you've had a chance to review that. We want to thank Brendan and Brienne Garouts, who generously donated classroom items to Hugh Crest Elementary. You've had a chance to review that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Mr. Leone seconds that. All in favor? Yep, Director Hammerson. Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. And now we want to thank Principal Cory Bernard from Phoenix Charter School. She's doing her regular check-in for this evening, this is the third regular check-in with the board. Thank you Cory for your updates this evening.
Thank you. So, just our state of the phoenix, we still have Lori Newton as our internum executive director. I'm Cory Bernard, the principal. Today's March 12th. Next slide. So, this is our prior attendance data that I presented at the last school board meeting. I was taking our school report card, the 23-24 school year with that 21%, and I was using our attendance data from Synergy, from 9 to 2024 to 11-26-2024. And I was trying to show that we were roughly at 21%, which was roughly our attendance the prior year. From looking at that data more and working with Janet Simless, Simliness, did I say that correct? Okay, I realized that this data that I presented at the last one was based on active students. If you want to go to the next slide. From working with Janet and talking, we realized that for the school report card, they're actually using the active and inactive students. So this, I feel, is a more accurate data. And this was something that her and I talked on the phone quite a bit about, trying to kind of brainstorm and figure out where the school report card numbers came from. And she helped me kind of see that our attendance rate for students that are above 90% is that 27 over 208, which is 12.98, not great. And then that 65.584 is our school-wide attendance data. So this is actually looking at our active and inactive together. If I would have presented our active and inactive at the last board meeting, it actually was at 16.86, so it wasn't at that 21%. So I've learned now that I need to have the active and inactive together. So from this, there is quite a bit of improvement that we can make with attendance. Next slide, please. There we go. So our, my plan for attendance, we've been kind of working on this since the last board meeting. We're still struggling with attendance and re-engaging students while eliminating barriers. My pathways teachers, I have them building connections with parents through open and regular communication. We're referring students for weekly food boxes and clothing needs to our wellness coordinator Lisa. So we're trying to build that capacity and support the students within their classes. Our safety and wellness manager and lead, which is AJ and Joshua, I have them making personal calls home when students are three or more days absent. And I have them connecting with targeted students daily to encourage engagement and help build relationships, trying to get some more buy-in into the school from the students. Me and my dean of students Leary, we are meeting with students weekly about attendance and discussing ways to help improve that. I'm making personal calls home to help eliminate barriers that are causing attendance issues. And we are trying to hold more parent-student meetings to re-engage students that have kind of dropped off. School-wide, we are trying to host some more school-wide and public events to encourage engagement with parents and students. Currently, we have an art display at Roseburg Public Library that's going till the end of March that our amazing art teacher, Ms. Lawson, has put together. So we're encouraging parents to kind of come and see. We also have our OYC, and, which is our Oregon Youth Corp., and our FFC Food and Farm Corp. that we use to help engage students in the workforce while they're also earning high school credits. So these are some opportunities that we are trying to use to get students attending school more and to get some more buy-in from them and their parents. Next slide. Some additional school data, at Phoenix, we really focus on eliminating barriers that otherwise interfere with students attending and graduating. One of the largest ones we see are teen pregnancies. So at Phoenix, I currently have two students who are attending general education classes with their children. Both are expected to graduate this year with high school diplomas. I have a student who previously had dropped out and who has re-enrolled in our GED program. She does attend with her child and is expected to earn her GED this year. We have two students who have already received GEDs this year because they were able to continue their education by bringing their child with them. And we have three students who are currently pregnant and plan to continue their education towards their high school diploma. All three will be allowed to attend with their child. So we are again trying to help eliminate some of those barriers and support the students who otherwise would drop out. Next slide. On track for graduation data, so at the very beginning of the year, I had presented the data for September. I had actually gone through all of the transcripts, looked at the transcripts to make sure the data was correct. I have just now done that, we just wrapped up trimester two. So trimester two ended on Friday, so I spent Monday and Tuesday, that's why my packet was a little late. I wanted to go through and review those transcripts again. So going through those, my ninth graders, I only have 10.52% on track for graduation. Not good at all. We only have 19 ninth graders, two of them are at four credits. We are gonna be really working with them, trying to support them, getting some additional support in the classes, because that ninth grade on track is the most important. Our 10th graders, you can see at the beginning of the year, they were at 36.84% on track for graduation. We're now up to 58.82%. Our 11th graders at the beginning of the year were at 25.45%, they are currently at 52.94%. And our seniors were at 28.85%, and they are currently at 51.22%. So we are seeing growth, we need to see more in our ninth graders, and we need to target those ninth graders a bit better. Out of the 19 that we currently have enrolled, only half of them have been with us the whole year. So we do have a pretty high transition in our students. As of January 2025, we've had five students that have currently graduated with their GEDs. Next slide. We are using our STAR 360 assessment, I talked about these at the prior board meetings. These are diagnostic measurements that we administer in September and December. It goes out to all students to help prepare for our Oregon State Assessments. They give detailed computer adaptive assessments that track students' progress in reading and mathematics. They give us detailed reports and dashboards that we can use to help personalize the student's educational plan. And it covers those essential academic areas and helps predict performance on our state standardized assessments. So by giving these throughout the year, we are seeing a trend with the longitudinal data, hoping that is going to predict our progress for our state assessment. So our next slide, this was our English Language Arts data from 23-24. You can see that our eighth graders were at 21%, our 11th graders were at 42%. Our state average, eighth graders needed a lot of growth, our 11th graders were pretty close, they were at 42%, state average was at 48%. If you go to our next slide. This is the longitudinal reading data from the STAR 360. So the eighth grade, because it's the first year we have them, you can see based off of that first one, it's looking at 29% of the students are meeting benchmark. So that's giving us a predictor of roughly where they will be hopefully with the state assessment. For our juniors, since we've been using this STAR 360 for multiple years, you can see how they scored in ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade. So you can see that we are decreasing that red, which is our urgent intervention, and we're increasing that green, which is at and above benchmark. So based off this and how the 11th graders are performing this year, I would hope that we would get close to that 49% at benchmark for our state assessments. Next slide. So this is our 23-24 school data from the Oregon State Assessments in Mathematics. Our eighth grade, only 5% met, our 11th grade, nobody met. We do need a lot of improvement in mathematics. Next slide. Again, based off of the longitudinal data, you can see our eighth grade are still really struggling. We did adopt curriculum this year that we have been implementing to help support the teachers, help support students and their families. I am hoping to see some improvement. Our 11th graders, again, you can see that we are decreasing that red over the last three years and improving on the at and above benchmark. I do anticipate our students meeting this year, not the state average, but at least having some students meet hopefully close to that 17% or better. Our next slide is our science data. Our STAR 360 doesn't have an assessment for that, but last year, 23-24, our eighth graders were at 5%, very far below the state standard of 26. But our 11th graders were at 30%, and the state average was at 31%. So we were doing pretty good. So we were doing pretty good, and I hope to continue with that this year. Next slide. Looking forward, again, I am aligning more with RHS's schedule. I've already had it approved that we're moving towards semesters next year. I presented a new schedule to my board, and we'll have the final read at our board meeting next week, where we'll be moving towards seven credits offered yearly, more aligned with RHS and other high schools in the state. We will be posting for an executive director position and additional board members. So we want to get some new people on our board and start our interviews for an executive director. We do have our graduations scheduled for June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at six P M. at Jacobia Auditorium at U C C. And we would love to see some board members there to support our students. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
When you're doing your assessments, can you explain a little bit more about the active and inactive? How?
Are you talking about the attendance?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, because if they're not there, then they can't really be tested. So the other data.
So that's something, so the attendance data. From working with Janet and kind of trying to figure this out, we realized that the school report card does take into account the active and inactive students. For the state assessment, it's going to take into account all of the students that are currently enrolled with us, I believe, as of May first. So if we do have students on May first that are enrolled with us that then leave, I'm really going to be reaching out to those parents to get them re-engaged because they are part of our school data because they were enrolled with us on May first. So the active, inactive for the attendance is calculated a little differently than it is calculated for the state assessment. The state assessment is based off of who is actively enrolled as of May first.
And so the testing results, the percentages, obviously, they have to be there.
Yeah.
These are only the ones that are there that you were able to test.
The last year's testing data or the STAR three-sixty?
The STAR three-sixty.
So the STAR three-sixty, we, if they are enrolled with us, we are testing them. And if they aren't getting tested in their pathways class, I have one of our instructional assistants or one of our special ed teachers pulling them to make sure we get that because we do use that STAR three-sixty to do progress monitoring and to set goals and benchmarks for our students so we can see growth and figure out exactly where we have some deficits. So if I'm understanding correctly, the, the attendance data is based off of all of the students that have been enrolled throughout the year. The state assessment data is only based on the students that are actively enrolled. Is that, did I clarify that? Did I, did I, okay, I'm not sure if I answered your question fully.
Well, it's just still hard to understand that if, if they're not actively attending, to extract data on them.
So from my understanding, the inactive is only part of the attendance part. And I'll be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure why it is the active and inactive. From talking with Janet, we were trying to figure that out. And based off of the school report card and data, the active and inactive that I'm pulling from Synergy is more aligned with the school report card data. And it's coming from reports that are submitted to the state for that data.
Okay, and then the other question would be on the, the ninth grader testing dropped pretty significantly from.
Oh, I will, I will explain that. So being a new principal, I am definitely reaching out to the district office and to Superintendent Nie for some guidance on data and what I need to pull from where. The report I gave in December for my ninth grade on track, I did present it as data that I got from Synergy. I had not pulled transcripts. What I've learned is that depending on what I pull from Synergy, if I don't click one box, it changes everything. So the report, I believe I pulled in December, I did not click include graduation requirements. And the ones that I do pull that align with the transcripts, I only get when I click that box to include graduation requirements. So the data in December, I don't believe it was accurate. I did not have a chance to look at the transcripts. I was doing it based off what I got out of Synergy, and I don't believe that I was using an accurate report. The reports that I've pulled now, I have actually gone through, talked them through, and compared them with the actual transcripts. So I do know that this data is accurate now. The data at the beginning of the year in September and this one at the end of trimester two were based solely on transcripts. The data I presented in December for my ninth grade was based off a Synergy report that I didn't get accurate information from. And that was, and that was me not knowing. And that was a question I had did ask Janet. Why am I getting different data? And she wasn't sure, but she did clarify, I do need to click the box that I need to include graduation requirements. And that was, what it actually did is it gives me, I've kind of got my data here, but it gives me all of my students and the credits attempted, and then my credits completed. What I realized is that when I did not click that one box in Synergy for the report, it doubled all of the credits completed.
Woo-hoo.
No, not woo-hoo, because it's not.
Good on paper.
It looked good on paper, but it wasn't accurate. And so when I went through, I, you know, was pulling these reports, and I realized that when I pulled it, and then I pulled it again the next day, there was a huge difference. And it was because of that one box being checked. And then when I compared it with the transcripts, I do know that the report I have now does align directly with transcripts. So I'm not sure about the whole synergy thing. It's a little clunky sometimes, so I reach out quite a bit for some guidance on what things actually mean, what reports are the best to pull. And some are better than others, and those are things that I'm learning and working with, like Janet and Superintendent Nie, to figure out the best ones. So I am sorry, my, yes, my December was not good.
Do we have any other questions?
I just want a quick clarification on what, something to answer the beginning of this. So how do you guys, how did you guys define an active student for your attendance report on here? Not like, what's the difference? Just what did you guys use to define an active student?
So this, so again, this comes out of synergy. From my understanding, and I'm not a hundred percent clear on this because it, I, I'm not sure exactly how they pull that data for the state. What I know is that when I'm looking at my attendance data, when I ask, ask for active, it's only counting the students that are currently enrolled. But we have students that, you know, get ten-day dropped and then re-enroll, very fluid. So the active and inactive, from my understanding, it is taking into account every student that has been enrolled during this school year.
Right, but to get this active number, I mean, does that, does that mean somebody's attended school in the last ten days?
Yes.
Is that an active student?
Yes, so an active student would be.
Attended in the last ten days.
Actually, it would count any student that is in attendance the day I pull the report. So you can, so when I pulled this report, I can do a timeframe. So I did it from the start of school, nine-three-twenty-four, to eleven-twenty-six. Oh, that's the last one. There, I did it from nine-three-twenty-four to three-five, twenty-twenty-five. So what it does is it takes any student that is active, is a student that was currently enrolled during that timeframe. The inactive also includes students that were enrolled that have either dropped out or, you know, graduated. So the active and inactive, it's accounting for every student that has attended Phoenix during that timeframe.
Yeah, no, I get that part, but I'm going back to the, the one before, the old one that said it was twenty-one percent. Now, how does that define, I mean, you obviously excluded the inactive student. So what was the criteria to define an active?
So the active student is just students that are active at that time. So the way I interpreted it is that during that timeframe, it's not looking at the entire timeframe. It's looking at that start and how many students are active on the eleven-twenty-six. That's how I interpreted it. I'm not a hundred percent confident in that because I can't pull that data and see the list of the students. But from my understanding and talking it out with Janet, that was kind of what we came up with from that. And so I just kind of assumed that I would want active students for attendance. And I didn't take into account that inactive, I'm, I'm looking at a time period. So I want to account for every student that has ever attended during the time period.
Now, lots of challenges, you know, everybody knows that. But I'm just wondering, have you or other people maybe in your board or other administrators reached out to other schools similar to yours to just get some best practices or more information on what they're doing differently or better or worse?
I know that Lori Newton, our interim executive director, has kind of reached out to similar charter schools that are our size in the state. I personally really reach out to Superintendent Nie and occasionally I'll reach out to Dr. Weber to try and align more with what Roseburg is doing so that there isn't this us and you. So we've got more alignment there. We do follow with the five D, we're doing the best practices, the evaluations, everything. We're trying to align more with what Roseburg School District is doing. So I haven't looked into similar charter schools because as being a part of Roseburg School District, I want to make sure we are supporting the students together. So if something you guys are doing is working, I want to support that and vice versa. A lot of, I do talk with some people at Roseburg High. We communicate regularly about students because we do have very fluid students between Roseburg and Phoenix. So I am reaching out to the counselors and to some of the assistant principals so that we are supporting each other. So if I have a discipline issue, I'm coordinating with them and vice versa. So I actually haven't reached out beyond us, really.
Thank you very much for coming and giving us an update.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, my glitches in my data there, but.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we, we have resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, twelve. This is in support of the federal reauthorization of the Secure Rural Act. So I'm going to read this. This is Roseburg Public School Board Resolution in Support of the Federal Reauthorization of the Secure Rural Schools Act. Whereas the Secure Rural Schools and Communities Self-Determination Act, S R S, has historically provided essential funding for rural schools districts, including Roseburg Public Schools, helping to support vital educational programs such as career pathway development, career technical education opportunities, and infrastructure maintenance. And whereas the loss of S R S funding places a significant financial strain on our school district and others across the country that rely on these resources to provide a high-quality education to students in rural communities. And whereas the failure to re-author, re-authorize the Secure Rural Schools Act in October of twenty-twenty-four by the federal government has resulted in an immediate and severe, severe funding shortfall for our district, jeopardizing critical program staffing and student opportunities. And whereas the presence of federally managed lands within our county limits, local revenue generation, generation, making S R S funding essential to maintaining educational success and quality in our schools. And whereas continued investment in rural education is crucial to ensuring that students in communities like ours receive the same educational opportunities as their peers in urban areas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Roseburg Public Schools Board of Directors strongly urges the United States Congress to act swiftly to re-authorize and fully fund the Secure Rural Schools Act to ensure the continued stability and success of rural school districts. And be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to our federal representatives, including members of the United States Senate and House of Representatives as a formal request for immediate legislative action to reinstate and secure this critical funding for our students and community. I would approve, or I would put out a motion to approve this resolution.
I motion to approve the resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, twelve, in support of the federal reauthorization of this secure rural, rural schools act.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Do we have discussion? Great, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, so let it be noted that this is adopted and approved the twelfth day of March, twenty-twenty-five, by the Roseburg School, Roseburg Public School Board of Directors. Thank you. Um. So we have committee reports. We have Director Cotton, who is going to give us a brief synopsis of the Building and Sites Meeting on February seventeenth.
So I'll be very brief. We met on the seventeenth. The majority of the meeting was going over the long-range facilities plan and changes that we, a few changes we need to make and some additional information we want to put in the, into the report. And that will be presented in the next couple of meetings for approval of the board. And then we talked about the additional, about fixing the foyer at RHS main building to increase security and further control access to the campus. And we were told that this project can be completed as an extension to current seismic work occurring through S B James. And that's basically what we did.
That's great news. Thank you. Director Krimmets will give us a quick report on curriculum and instruction.
Yes, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met February nineteenth to discuss our ongoing purchase of curriculum for the E L A and health adoptions, as well as our mid-year data review. The sixth through twelfth grade health curriculum is currently piloting. And that pilot program of the curriculums will go through March, the rest of this month. And we're making sure that they're, the piloted programs align with the state standards. We're also piloting, we started this week, the two English language curriculum programs for our elementary schools. And we have twenty-three teachers representing the grades, all of the grades of our schools to get a real accurate idea of what would be the best curriculum for those. We, we will also do our community review of both of these programs. And that will be held in April. So the community can definitely have an eye on what, what we are teaching our students in those areas. You know, we also talked a lot about our mid-year reading and math data. And we also are, have, you know, we're, we're encouraged, but we also have a long way to go that we're wanting to improve in both of those areas. But we do, we do really rely on our, on our data. It has to be, you know, strong and accurate, and we use the iReady and Dibbles to really get a handle on areas that need to be addressed. So that's why, you know, data is, is important. In, in our district, we look at it seriously. Also, our students in grades six through twelve, they're being assessed with a, another program, the math program for, for their reading and math. So we're, we're in the throes of, of our curriculum and improving our instruction and expecting to see some good results there. and improving our instruction and expecting to see some good results there.
Thank you, Director Crimmits. And now we have the superintendent report.
Thank you very much. Just ready to go here for you. So I appreciate the opportunity to share a few things with you tonight. Love to start with pictures of our kids. It's great to hear, see kids tonight, great to hear from our high school kids as well. And, and we're, I am always grateful for the opportunity to work with kids. And I'm always grateful for the opportunity to work with people who work directly with our kids. And I'll just say, we've got amazing staff and we have amazing kids and we have amazing community. And I just also want to thank the board. I was making some notes up here. If you don't go to board meetings very often, you don't see a focus on students like you do this board. And I just want to publicly thank the board who takes the time to acknowledge the great things students are doing and the great things staff are doing. So thank you for that. I want to start tonight by thanking, it is classified employee appreciation week. And I want to give a huge shout out to our classified employees. Let me just say this, you can, there's a lot of verbs and adjectives we could use to describe our incredible classified employees. But let me put it simply, we, we could not operate as an organization without our classified employees. It would be impossible. From feeding our children to caring for our students, to supporting instruction, to supporting families. These individuals literally help us every day accomplish the work that we intend to do. And without them, it wouldn't be possible. So thank you to our classified employees. I hope you feel a measure of appreciation that's sincere. Thank you for your dedication and your invaluable support of our students and community. Thank you. It's always good to take a look at what we're trying to accomplish as a school district, as a board. And so I'll just give you a couple of examples. I often say I could, we could give you a hundred examples. You heard some tonight from students. I'll just show a few things that show our focus on care, support and instruction. We've got Jolene students on the left side, working on their Pioneer Press, their news school show there. You've got some students that some of you, I believe, were able to meet at our legislative visit with a couple legislators where we were visiting our CTE programs. Some of our welding students who are amazing young people that were, they partner with Journey Church in town to create their new sign. If you drive by and see that. We've got Winchester students that are building, doing some work with the STEAM team, building some pyramids. And if you had a chance to get to the home and garden show here in town, you'll, you will have noticed a few of our students there. These students here from Fremont were, they had made some picnic tables that were, were displayed there. So great to see our kids out and about doing great things in our community. Speaking of great kids, I am a little salty tonight that, quite frankly, that we weren't able to go to this because this darn meeting, which is a huge celebration, was put on the same night as the board meeting, but I'll get over it. Said that last year has also happened. So I've made a couple of phone calls to make sure this doesn't happen again. But we do have incredible kids. There are five students. Alicia Patel, Grace Harris, Ann and Colberg, Owen Miller and Sylvia Ekman. You'll, these are a couple of familiar faces that oftentimes interact with the board. And tonight is the Roseburg High School Foundation, of which we have at least one of our board members. Thank you, Director Cubix, on this foundation as well, honoring our future first citizen finalists tonight. So congratulations to all of them. You know, when I think about our kids, I, I've had actually some interesting conversations with people in our community over the last couple of weeks. And this, this kind of word of trepidation and fear has come up. And I was thinking about these kids. I was talking to a few of them actually recently, one of them today. And this idea of kind of how to move forward, go forward without fear came up. And I was reminded of something that I heard long ago. I don't know who to give credit to. This was not mine. But someone at one point said fear has two meanings. It can mean forget everything and run, or it can mean face everything and rise. And when we think about what our students are doing and I think about the work that we're engaged in, I am thankful that in our school district, in our classrooms, in our schools, we enthusiastically and intentionally and purposefully choose option two. I want to talk about that. You know, fear is one of those things I've heard about, as I said, the last couple of weeks. Since December, I've talked at board meetings about some budget reductions. And I've had a number of people kind of reach out with some, with some questions about that. There's fear about that. There's fear around employment and fear around markets changing. And I want to talk a little bit tonight about a few things and keeping in mind that we do face everything and rise. That's the point here. We made some announcements today in buildings. And I want to just go over these with the board, just so you're aware. These transitions are really twofold. When we talk about budget reductions, and I'll talk about this in a little bit. What we don't, what we don't do is we don't panic. We don't blame. What we do is we figure out what we're trying to accomplish and we get organized and we figure out how to think forward, not just for next year, but for the next several years. And we have made a couple of transitions that align with where we're going. They align with the skills and the, the needs in certain buildings. They also reflect some of our budget and staffing considerations as we move forward. So I want to talk about a few things today. So Megan Purtle, current principal at Winchester Elementary, she's been appointed to serve as the assistant principal at Fremont Middle School. Kevin Hunt, who is the current AP assistant principal RHS, has been appointed to serve at Winchester next school year. And Ben Bantia, who currently serves in teaching and learning as one of our coordinator, has been appointed to serve as the principal of the Fullerton Four Elementary next school year. We're working on the transition plan with this. I, it's worth acknowledging, Russ is here. Thank you, Russ, for your service. Russ will not be joining us full-time next year, but we definitely appreciate you. We will not be reposting the AP position at the high school. And we will not be reposting the teaching and learning, teaching and learning coordinator position at Central Office. Those effectively are, I'm excited about the opportunities moving forward. And these also should be noted, reflect our budget situation as we think forward. It's just too much on one sheet of paper. Sorry, I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna read it. Let me talk a little bit about where we're at with budget. So I think I've said this before, but the way budgets work, it's a little bit complicated. It's a, it's a little bit cumbersome in Oregon. We have a really interesting system we work in. I think we kind of understand it, but it's a bit clunky. I'll just reiterate because sometimes people have heard this once and need to hear it twice. Sometimes you don't even want to hear it once. I'll say it again anyway. So we're at the end of a biennium year. And so you've probably heard about budgets coming out. I've talked about this publicly. We have, we're working on an estimated budget right now. And so we're in the process of trying to determine, read some tea leaves with Salem. The twenty-sixth of February, there was a revenue forecast that came out March third. There was our first budget estimate that came out from the state. Next week, we're anticipating a co-chair's budget from Ways and Means Committee. And so we're in the, we're in the process of trying to, to get an idea of where the legislature will be in setting our allocation for next year. In the meantime, we need to prepare for next year. We have decisions to make. And we won't have a defined budget from the state by the time, and I know this couple of budget committee members, hey, that our budget committee and board get around to do some work around the, around the budget. That being said, we have a very good sense of, of what we will do to both make adjustments based on class size and some other factors and reductions. And the slide I just showed you, those were effectively reductions that we made to, to compensate for a loss in funding. Now, on the, on the right-hand side, you'll see, we talked, thank you for the resolution tonight. That was great. Just so everyone knows, the rural schools, secure rural schools funding that's been, that was authorized in the year two thousand and was not reauthorized in October of twenty-four. It's about a, about a six hundred thousand dollar hit to our budget. There's been some other interesting things that have happened. If you've noticed this in your own home budget and you've noticed like, why are things getting, why is my insurance getting more expensive? Our, our organization kind of deals with the same thing. Our safe rates went up about forty percent. That's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I've talked about PERS rates before, our, what's called our SIA funding or, or student investment account. We were told expect about an eleven percent increase. That's on the cat tax. And we did receive our preliminary estimate that was flat and no increase. And we're still waiting on some of our federal funds, our IDA funds, our title funds. We don't even have preliminaries. So what we're doing right now again is we're setting a plan in motion to be able to deliver the highest quality instructional opportunities next year for students. I anticipate, at least initially looking at what we initially looked at with PERS, it was about a four point three million dollar, four million dollar hit to that. We have identified about two point four million dollars in reductions that we're going to be making. And those are not just reductions, but sometimes adjustments. I want to be, and we'll, we've started working on those. The, the last slide was an example of how we're going to work on those. But I want to just be honest with the, just straightforward with the community and the board on this. What won't happen in our organization is some of the stuff we see happening, that we see happening federally. Someone's not going to get an email about their job disappearing. It's not going to happen. When we need to make an adjustment or reduction, it's going to happen like it happened this week, where we sit down face-to-face with people. We have a conversation. We talk about next steps. We work with the community. That's the process we'll go through. So I think it's important to, for people listening that are nervous about what's going to happen, that that's our process. I am very hopeful. I cannot guarantee this, but it is our full intention that all of our people that are currently with us, that are staying with us, will be with us next year. That's the hope. We can make adjustments on attrition and the hope is we can do that. There's issues with licensure and some of those things. But I want people listening that are nervous, that are wondering, should I run? Don't. We'll do what we do and that's, we'll, we'll go face forward on this. We're not going to run away from it. We'll have the conversations we need to have and we'll move forward. Are we going to look the same next year? Not exactly, but we'll have a significant amount of resources to do great work with kids. I'm optimistic about the future. Now, I will say this, the budget estimate we received March third was a bit of a surprise. And the, the funding from the state was diminished a little bit. I think this is because there's concerns about federal funding, not just in education, but in their spaces, human health and, health and human services and things. So you'll know the, I just want to let the board know, when you look at the estimated budget, there was about another one point six million dollars in, in, in a deficit. Some of this comes from rural schools, some of this is the safe, some of this is the, the numbers from the state crunching a little bit as I think they're trying to manage potentially less money from the federal government. What is, I want to be clear about is we're trying to make these reductions as far from the classroom as we can. So my recommendation on this, and you'll see this as we go through the process next month of the, the budget process, working with the committee and the board on this, is you will see a reduction in some of the transfer funds proposed to you. So we transfer money to major maintenance. We transfer money to vehicle replacement. We transfer money to the field replacement. And you will, I just want to be transparent that you'll see a reduction for next year in some of those transfers to cover these costs so that we can keep these cuts as far away from kids as we can. All right, two more things real quick. I've been thinking about Hemingway recently. Was actually reading Hemingway book and I came across this quote and I thought, ah, what a perfect quote. Let us make sure to be courageous and I appreciate your, your courage. I encourage our entire community to think about, to think about this quote. We see this in our kids and our staff, that courage, according to Hemingway, is grace under pressure. Let's have grace and understand and think about how to best support people as we go through our most important assets are kids. So let's mostly focus on our kids. All right, last, there are technical things we have to solve. And oftentimes organizations get stuck in the technical, what's right in front of me? What do I need to think about today? I want to make sure that, and I want to applaud the board on this. We can get into a space of paralysis at times when we have concerns. And I'm grateful to work in an organization that doesn't get stuck in and mired in problems. There are many school districts and organizations that are stuck in the technical work of how do we solve this problem? I'll just pick on budget, for example. How do we solve a problem with an assessment? How do we solve a problem with, you know, there's a family issue and a student issue? We need to think about those. A lot of the work is technical and that's work that can be adaptive. But the adaptive work is thinking about what we want to become. What do we want to be known for? What is the legacy we will leave for children? I just want to thank our organization, our staff and our board for doing that work. An example of that was when the board recently approved a two point five million dollar investment in what will be the first ever high school building on a college campus in Oregon to promote the, the advanced medical pathways. That is an example of people not worried and running away from, from opportunities. There's a list of things we're doing that we continue to do to work with industry leaders, dialing in our instructional frameworks to boost our scores. So thank you for continuing to have an eye on innovation and students. It has been said, which I agree, that, that history oftentimes turns on very small hinges. And I think for those of us that remember that and can turn on those hinges now, particularly in crisis, for some is an opportunity that we'll continue to focus on as a school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. And I think I can speak for the board on how much we appreciate your transparency always. And we thank you for that. So we do have now Board of Education reports. I'll just start with you, Director Shercliffe.
I have nothing to report.
I said all I need to say.
Okay, Director Cubic.
I'm going to be really quick, but I want to report that I attended the FHA dinner fundraiser on the sixth. Was wonderful, great turnout. Be revenue generation and it was exceptional, exceptional with the kids, exceptional with the people that participated. It was really, really good. Secondly, the, on the twenty-seventh, the strategic planning work session, the community engagement, the continuing of that process and focusing on that as part of what we believe in and showing what we stand for is really, really good. Also, just as an aside, another wonderful student from our school became an Eagle Scout on the twenty-fourth. And I'm quite proud of that person and glad to be part of the program that advances that program or advances scouting. And then finally, we're missing the Roseburg High School Foundation Awards. And I know who the finalists were, but I don't know who the winner is.
Thank you, Director Cubic. Director Cotton.
Well, I don't know how many of you got to go to Mamma Mia. It was fabulous and probably the best high school play that I've seen in a long, long time at Roseburg High School. They, they had it together. And if you didn't get to go, I'm sorry. It was, it was amazing. Director Crimmits hit, hit a chord with me. First of all, thank you for your transparency on the adjustments on the budget. What makes it more palatable is our strap plan. We're following our strap plan. That's what we live by. And that's great. But also we, what we also live by and this, and struck a chord with me is how important data is for this board and this district and the administration and the teachers, everybody involved. And the neat thing about it, we understand it. We understand our numbers. We understand our data. Administration has done a fabulous job of, of working with us on that. And I think it's really important that you understand the numbers that you're getting. And not all boards do that. And I'm really thankful that we do. It just makes our life so much easier. Anyway, we're, thank you for hosting us. I love this school. And I almost voted no on the consent agenda because in that consent agenda, you probably have all looked. But there's, there's some folks that were, have retired or retiring or resigning. And they've meant a lot to this district. Russ is sitting out there, Melissa sitting out over there, wonderful teachers and just. and just employees down the line that we will miss. They've, they have made a big difference in the lives of children. And I didn't think it was probably the right thing to do, but thank you. Thank you for all the years that you, you've given us.
And I'm going to share two things. Number one, our kids are amazing. So Thursday, March thirteenth, at five o'clock at Sunny Slope, we're having the fifteenth anniversary of Future Chefs, Chef's National Challenge. Sorry, I'm having a problem with words tonight. So if you want to come and watch these kids cook, like I'm addicted to these cooking shows for kids. And I've been asked to be a judge. So I'm like, woo-hoo. So come join me, celebrate these little kids. We're going to pick out one. It's going to go to nationals. So this is really exciting. The other thing that I wanted to share is I have the privilege of just having a conversation with a couple of older ladies. And they were asking me about the school, school board stuff. But they both were very impressed and thankful to the Roseburg High School and our school system because it provided each of their sons a tremendous education and a wonderful head start for their futures, exactly what our strap plan says. You know, one son got a bunch of dual credits and it just launched him. He, and they're both now very successful. And the mothers were like, thank you for the education they received at Roseburg High School. And I would imagine they both went through the, the whole school system. So it starts here. It starts here. And I'm excited for where we're going to be in the future, short term, but really excited what's going to be happening in five, ten, fifteen years from now. We have a bright future. So thank you very much for coming. All regular business before the board is concluded, barring, barring no objections, the regular meeting is adjourned.